Tonight, I've got to turn my microphone on. So, we're going to call the Board of Mayor and Alderman Work Session to order now. And as usual, we have an opportunity for citizens to make comments that are not on the, about items that are not on the agenda. And I have some speaker cards on items on the agenda. But I do have a guest tonight. We have Carl Forsberg here, and we've been working with Carl. Carl, you and your dad come on up. And he's going to tell you about his Eagle project, and when this started, and how we've been involved, and what it's for. You can sit next to him. It's okay. Oh, okay, yeah. Well, you do what, you won't bother us if you're even over there. So you, okay Carl, we're glad to have you. Tell us who you are, and go from there.
My name is Carl Forsberg. I'm from Troop 135. I am currently a life scout and working on my Eagle. I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to come and share with you the amazing experience I've had in completing my Eagle Scout project. My project was install two flag repositories around the city of Franklin, so that citizens have a place to respectfully retire old flags. You might have seen the first box, which is right outside of City Hall, and the other one is at the fire station on Highway 96. Some of the reasons I chose this project is because of how unique and beneficial of a way this would be. It'd help my community, and would continue for years to come. In addition, I'm able to use several skills I have developed as the Art Student of the Year two years in a row at Woodrow Middle School, and an Architecture major at Raven High School right now. My third reason for creating these flag repositories was that I have always been, I always thought it was so amazing that my troop had such a reverent and respectful way of conducting flag retirement ceremonies, and being a part of these has influenced my understanding of the importance of the American flag to this nation. And I also hope that this project will be, in some small way, able to pass on that appreciation to others. I have learned and grown so much during this project. Some of the skills that I have developed include writing emails and etiquette, pitching ideas and obtaining buy-in from others, driving the process and working through obstacles, managing an overwhelming number of tasks, budgeting and financial management, fundraising and requesting sponsorship, the importance of planning in relation to the performing of the actual work, delegating work to others that I could easily do myself, managing my time and juggling multiple and sometimes conflicting priorities, and finally, writing and delivering a speech to City Council. At this point, the final step in completing this project is to publicize it to the community according to my marketing plan. Some of the ways I intend to spread the word are through an announcement on City of Franklin's webpage, adding a write-up on the, my church's website and newsletter, passing out flyers at the upcoming 36th Annual Main Street Festival on April 27th, working with Jamie Melton on any other ideas to get the word out, communicating and completing my troop's newsletter. And I'd be interested in hearing any other ideas from the council afterwards. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the people who have helped me along my way. I want to thank Mayor Moore and Mr. Brad Wilson for embracing this idea and helping me get it approved with the city. I want to thank my troops committee and my patrol leader council of Troop 135 for agreeing to have the troop historian be responsible for maintaining these boxes. I would like to thank my Eagle, my Life to Eagle coach, Mr. Riddle, as well as my scout master for the majority of the project, and later, my Life to Eagle coach, Mr. Burke, for being such tremendous sources of advice during the project. I want to thank my current scout master, Mr. Patterson, especially for his help, and pouring the concrete right outside of City Hall. I want to express gratitude to all the scouts that volunteered, to many friends and family that donated to this project, and Lowe's and Home Depot for both sponsoring this. I want to thank my grandfather for taking me to meet with the mayor on one occasion, as well as spending his spring break with me painting these boxes. Finally, I want to thank my mom for helping me prioritize my time and actually doing a bit of painting herself, as well as my dad for helping me plan such a big project and making sure I didn't forget anything. Thank you, everyone, for giving me this opportunity to share my experience with you. If we have any time left, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And you started the journey for getting it out to the public right now, because you're on Franklin TV, and it'll be reshown on YouTube. So there'll be a lot of opportunities, and any way we can help promote what you're doing, and the importance of the way we handle our flags, we sure appreciate that. Any questions from the board? Alderman Berger?
I was just wondering if you would tell us the locations again?
Um, one is right outside here. You can see it as you walk in.
On Third Avenue?
Yep.
Okay.
And the other one is at Highway 96. There's a fire station. It is, it is placed at a parking spot. You can see it as you drive by.
Is it on 96 East, or, a fire station too? New Highway 96? The west, okay. Just want to make sure we said that again, so people are listening, they would know. Do you have plans to do others?
Um, no, not currently. This is all I was planning on doing. If somebody else wants to make another, they can.
Someone could actually pick up your project and do it, and increase it.
Yeah. I do know of one other person from my troop that has done a similar project to this. It was just, it was at a church, and I thought I'd make something a bit more accessible.
Well, thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. And congratulations on your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. We thank you for that. Now, we're going to go to the event permit for Derby Day Party at the park at Harlinsdale Farm. Any questions about that? We'll move on to item number two, which is a Resolution 2019-22, a resolution to establish decision points for the transition of Sanitation and Environmental Services Department Recycling and Commercial Services. If I want to see people cry tonight, I will tell them that we have deferred this one more time.
We're not going to defer.
How many times have we deferred it, Jack?
Good evening. We do want to bring this to you. This is, these are topics we have covered before in a couple other meetings, both in Work Session and also in our Budget and Finance Committee discussions related to budget, et cetera. And what we're bringing back to you is a little more structured discussion around key decisions that need to be made about transitions in our recycling program, as well as the transition out of the commercial dumpster business. Both are directions that you have generally given us, but we're now to the point where we need to start making some specific decisions and make certain plans, and we wanted to get your clear direction along the way. So that's what Mark, Jack, and Nate will present to you tonight, and walk through those decisions with you. And we've drafted a resolution that we would bring to you to help make those, those specific, provide that specific direction.
Thank you very much. We've gotten a lot of feedback from you on our previous discussions, but we wanted to make sure that when we are pulling the trigger on some of these items, we're absolutely clear in where we're going. So Vicki, if we could go to the second slide, please. So some of the, the key areas in which we are possibly looking to transition are curb-side recycling. As we know, the status of recycling in the United States has changed drastically, largely due to the markets in China. Employee safety is a key element to why we want to move in a new direction. The consolidation of equipment types was another item that we talked, as well as some efficiencies. We also discussed doing some eliminating, commercial dumpster collection in the, in the commercial collection services that we provide. We had performed a cost of service analysis last year, and we were able to identify that we are under recovering in that area, and to, to meet the cost of service, we would, if we were to do that, we would likely have to raise rates considerably, and thereby kind of driving us out of that market anyway. So if you would, Vicki, if we could go to the next slide, please. And Eric had sent out an email that might help guide the conversation, I believe, March 30th. So we're going to kind of talk through, and like to get some feedback as, as we go, if you would, please, if that's all right, Mayor. And then just kind of see where we all are, and I'll, you know, me, Jack, or Nate will be happy to answer any questions along the way. So, the first big question with respect to recycling, do we want to pursue automated curb-side recycling and transitioning from blue bag to, to the bins? And I have a sense that that's where we want to go, but want to make sure.
I have a question about that.
I do, too.
Sure. I think Mark wants it to be interactive, so please, Alderman.
Yes. So, this seems like the trend's kind of going away from who accepts it, too.
Correct.
And I know that our vendor presently has also said they're trying to move away from that. So, as far as moving forward with continuing to accept it, I'm for that as long as we have someone who's going to take it from us.
Correct. So our, our current vendor, we of course have blue bags. The blue bags of themselves are a contaminant to the recycling stream. So, we still have a contractual relationship with our current vendor. They have indicated a desire for us to move away from blue bags as well, and we feel that so, so that's, that's in part why we want to go there, but we're, we're seeing recycling facilities not even accepting bagged recyclables at this point. And we're, we're actually doing some research right now on that, that very, that very item.
Was there another question?
I have a question.
Alderman, transferred, then Alderman Berger.
Through our recycling, what has the quality of our recycling been? Is it, is it the high grade of recycling, or is there a lot of contaminants?
It's better than, it's better than most in middle Tennessee. Last time we did a waste audit on it, it was averaging between four and seven percent contamination. I can tell you, you know, Nashville, they're in the teens, where they're, they're struggling with their contractor to keep that program going, because of that. And a big part of what we're going to do education-wise, once we start the process and you give us that approval with the carts, with the education, is we're going to emphasize more on being more detailed in what can be recycled, and it's going to be more limited than, than it currently is due to the markets. We're trying to be proactive and have, educate and have the best product in Tennessee that will be easily marketable. Right now, it, it is, if it weren't in blue bags. Right now, Marshall County's the only facility anywhere within driving range that would even think about taking blue bags, and they're struggling.
Well, I agree with that education piece that would need to be a big part of this rollout, because we definitely do not want to discourage people, because if we see a lot of contaminants, and then perhaps we may have a charge for this, and that will probably negate people wanting to do it. So we, I think we're going to be between a, between a rock and a hard place for those who really want to put in good quality recycle versus those who just want to...
Yes, it's going to be very specific and simple.
Yeah.
But where most of your volume will come from will be from those specific items that we're going to be requiring.
Thank you so much.
We currently don't pay a tipping fee for our recyclables, and that's not common. There's a lot of, well, I would say the, the majority of communities that you come across are paying a tipping fee for their recyclables. So we're very fortunate in that respect.
Okay. The fee I was talking about, one that we may discuss this evening, about maybe administrative setup fee, which is part of any kind of container.
That's a one-time, be a one-time fee for the setup.
Thank you.
I've got Alderman Berger, then Alderman Martin.
So, you said Nashville is struggling. Are they struggling to keep their whole program?
Keep their what?
Are they, what are they struggling about? To keep their entire recycling program?
Because of their contamination levels.
So that...
They pay in excess of $150 a ton when their contractor deems it's contaminated.
Yeah, okay. So that's why they're struggling with their program. All right, so are we actually, if we didn't do blue bags, then can we actually find companies that are still doing this that are out there, that are active?
Absolutely, absolutely, especially if we clean up our list of items.
Right, yeah.
It's actually not a problem for Marshall County. The bags is the problem.
Right, okay, yeah.
We contacted Waste Management early today, because we're always keeping eye on what we've got as a backup in event something happens at Marshall County, and there's nobody, Waste Management told us point blank, if it's in a plastic bag, it's trash.
Yeah, actually having it in the carts is going to open up our options of where we can take it, who will take it.
That's good.
The best part about Franklin recycling is what I've seen is, we do have a clean product.
Pretty much.
Very clean product.
So what are, I've got two more questions. What are the most marketable products?
Right now? Aluminum, metal cans, cardboard.
Paper? All paper?
Paper, just kind of, it's, it's okay.
Okay. So, I was at my sister's in Marietta, Atlanta.
One in two plastics. Number one in two plastics.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask you. They have a rollout cart, just like our trash can, and in that rollout cart, yeah, you can't put bags like you get at Kroger's or Publix. Those bags are not recyclable because they're too thin, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, to me, I just think some of these grocery stores need to get rid of those bags because they're not recyclable.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's part of the...
What is it, state?
State law. The state is banning cities from being able to pass anything to do with plastic bags.
Yeah. So, let's see about that, I guess. So, anyway, so, and then the only other thing is, companies who accept it, okay, the only other thing I had, how do we guarantee that the companies, now, I don't know, this might seem an odd question to you, but how do we guarantee the companies recycle, they're picking up our recycling, actually recycle? Because we've had that problem around the nation in different places, where they pick them up, you just throw them out. They are not recycling.
You keep up with their end user when they bail it. You had to keep up with where they're sending it. And usually, if, if they're struggling in that area, it's going to come to the surface very quick, because they're going to have warehouse full of bailed material, and that's your first red flag. And we visit the facility in Marshall County frequently.
Okay.
And keep close tabs.
All right. Yeah. I've got Alderman Mark. We need to kind of move on, because there's a whole lot of this presentation, and I think we've determined that, that, so Alderman Martin, I'll recognize you, and then we're going to continue with the presentation.
Quick points. First of all, recycling is not to save money. It's to, it's to save the landfills. You know, I don't think that's...
Excuse me. Recycling saves the landfills. It, it's not cheap to recycle. We forget that sometimes. Carts will be more healthy. It will save the backs of the people that pick up my recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I've got heavy stuff, magazines, catalogs, all that. Glass bins are leaving, the glass bin out here. So, what, what do we do with our glass? Just put it in the garbage now?
Right now, the county convenience centers accept glass, so you can bring glass to those facilities, and you'll separate them out by, I guess, the type of class.
The county.
The county. So, the, the one county convenience center, recycling center that was left in Franklin was on 96 East in the Kroger Shopping Center, I don't recall the...
Yeah, that's where the bin was.
The former Kroger Shopping Center, my apologies, but there are county convenience centers throughout...
Okay. People have asked that question. Where can they take the glass now? Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's continue on with the presentation. And I'll, I'll recognize you in a little while, Alderman Peterson.
Okay, and so one of the, the direction we're, we're going down and recommending is that we would like to have this program a voluntary program. One of the concerns is that we, if we require this to be a mandatory program, that the carts will not be used appropriately and used for additional trash, which of course would add to the contamination that Jack spoke of earlier.
So that, that question is, do you have people opt in to getting the container? Or do you just, while you're putting them out, put them out for everybody, and then it's up to them if they use it? So there's kind of two paths here. People sign up, and they pay the setup cost to get the, the rollout container, and they're, you know, don't ever have to buy a blue bag again. And so there's that, that savings for those folks. Or do you, do you require it of everyone, and then it's, it's optional whether they choose to recycle or not, but they have the container, and every household that's in your system has the container from that point forward? It's just whether they use it or not. So it's, it's your choice. We've always assumed that it'd be voluntary, but this is the time to make that decision while we, when we put it out.
I'm just going to go down the line.
At this, at this point, I would say voluntarily sign on for this program. I would hate to see Ben sending, and of course, you have to pay for it, it's not free. If you, if it's mandatory, you have to pay for it, and then you're not using it, so that's not a good government thing to do.
If we cha, if we charge for the bins, if we charge for the bins, it probably should be voluntary. If we don't charge, I'd make it mandatory, and everybody has a, has a rollout cart, the same as they do a trash cart now. We didn't charge for the carts, you charge for an extra cart for the trash. You can do the same thing on this, too. I've looked at the $45 for the rollout cost and just wondered if there was a way of working around that, where we did not charge the $45, or we charged it over a year's period of time or something other.
Alderman Martin.
I don't have any comment.
Alderman Berger, you're next.
I'm not sure what we do about this, because when it's not, I, I don't like to make things mandatory if we don't have to, but at the same time, in this case, I almost want to do it, because the people that don't recycle are costing us more money. They're costing all the taxpayers more money. We're putting money, so if Citizen A recycles, and B recycles, and C and D do not, then Citizen C and D are costing us more money, and A and B is paying more money, because they've chosen not to recycle. And so, it's sort of a catch-22. And I don't, as I said, I'm not big on making things so mandatory if we don't have to, but I'm not sure how I feel about this, because I do have some, I do have some strong feelings that people need to start stepping up the plate and doing this. We've done a great job, and our season a great job in getting the word out and educating people, and, and what's the percentage right now of people that are recycling? Sixty, seventy percent?
Estimated.
Set out a week.
Pardon?
About sixty percent set out each, any given week. Participation numbers are probably higher.
Yeah.
Everybody don't set out every week.
So, we, we charge a setup fee for that cart, they're going to pay money in the setup fee for the cart, what, $45, I think you said? And then do we charge them every month for that extra? We're not.
No, it's a one-term.
So, they're not getting charged extra, but if you're not using it, and you're throwing yourself in the trash, and you're causing us to pay more money for that garbage, for that trash, because you refuse us to recycle, I say we charge them more money. And how do we do that? I'm not sure how that method would, we would work that out, but I think we need to seriously think about it.
Alderman Peterson.
My other thing I was going to say is, whenever we're talking about Metro, I just read this week that they're finally going to start picking up recycling twice a month. My family went, we would have to do, save this back for a month before we put it out? So that was my concern. On the voluntary or not, since it is a one-time fee, I would, the only concern I would have is that people might start putting stuff that really didn't belong in the recycling, in the recycling bin. That would be the only thing. It might be, I don't know, maybe Alderman Barnhill said, maybe charge the thing over a, over a year, but I think I read something that there might be some problems with that, with charging the fee, you know, not a one-time deal.
I'll, I'll ask that we wait on that. We're going to speak, actually, to that very, that very thing here in a little bit.
Thank you.
Alderman Speedy.
I guess I'd lean towards voluntary, with the exception of if the city viewed this as like an investment, for $45, do we have, could we guesstimate a two-year recapture cost because of no tipping fees for recycling versus tipping fees for waste? And, because if we do the opt-in, it's going to be 10 to 20% versus if we opt them in, there's only going to be 10 to 20% that maybe don't do it. I mean, it's, that's just behavior.
Alderman Plan.
I think we've pretty much reached our tipping point of who's going to participate with recycling. And, I mean, you can't make somebody recycle, because if you could, they would have already been doing it. So I think volunteer is the only way to go, and if they want to pay $45 to volunteer to do that, then absolutely.
Alderman McLendon.
What she said.
Alderman McLendon, I applaud your succinctness tonight.
So...
Keep on.
Moving along, and I'm going to actually combine a couple, several items here. We've discussed this administrative setup fee. The idea behind this is to recapture costs or really step into the program. We are recommending a cost of $45. This would essentially cover our out-of-pocket expenses to start up. As mentioned by Alderman Peterson and Alderman Barnhill, is there an option to pay over a period of months? We would request that we either pay a one, a one-time fee, or establish a number of months in which we would pay that fee off, one or the other. And it, it does pose some logistical problems if we have multiple scenarios in terms of the way we do billing. So, really, it's, the, the response is, we can do multiple months, but we would prefer to do either that or a one-time fee, so.
So pick one approach on how you're going to allocate the cost and do it with everybody. And, and like Mark said, $45 is the, the general cost that we've identified, but to be clear, that is a setup fee. The city continues to own the rollout container. That would be our, our asset, but that is the cost to set up, set it up and, and establish it. So if you wanted to spread it over three months, it would be $15 a month for those three months. You know, four months, you'd do $11.25, whatever you think, but let's pick one route and go with that, and, and, and that way, we're not trying to specialize it for different customers at different payouts, so.
Alderman McLendon.
Just tack $4 a month on. Let's be done with this.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just for one year?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it would be, this is just a one-time cost. This is not an ongoing cost. This is a one-time expense.
That was my thought, $4 a month.
$4 a month for, that's, that's actually less than what I just sent Amazon to deliver another box of blue bags.
Yeah.
So...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, continue the presentation.
Everybody's okay with that? $4 a month?
So...
All right. Here we go.
Moving on. So, the last question with respect to...
Smile if you like it.
Last question with respect to recycling. We are proposing to start the transition the first full week in January. My apologies, I don't have that, that date, but we would like to start on a Monday. We're past the holiday season, so we don't have, you know, that, that chaos. So, anyway, that, that's when we plan on starting, if, if that works with you all, and we're, we're gearing up for an education program to hit that date. It's going to be wonderful.
Are you volunteering for another photo op?
You know I'm down for that.
We appreciate your participation in advance.
Okay, is that it?
One, one quick thing on that. While that would be when it would start, we would start promoting it probably as early as this summer in terms of signup, and in fact, we may even come up with some clever ways to incentivize early signups, like people can get in for prize drawing, or a free cart, or a whatever, you know, we're just thinking of different ways that we could say, if you put in within the, between June 1 and July 30th, you get, you know, you get in a drawing. And we could just do some ways that we... And we could just do some ways that we incentivize it and people get something, an opportunity for something back for getting on board early in terms of the signup for the, for getting the rollout.
Their picture with Alderman McLendon. Next item. So you still got something else?
One last question, excuse me, with respect to the commercial aspects. We feel that your input is that we want to stop the commercial rollout, excuse me, commercial dumpster service. We had originally planned on doing this at the end of June, beginning of July, while providing a 90-day notice. We're actually past the 90-day notice period because we wanted to talk with you all first. That's okay. We're gonna adjust. Alderman McLendon did comment that, you know, he expressed an interest in making sure that people have been notified, but we wanted to make sure that 90 days was appropriate for you all. And if you want to go further, that's fine, we'll adjust, but right now, we're looking at 90, so.
Your opinion, Jack and Nate, in terms of, does 90 days provide people sufficient notice? Do they have options that, that there are other services that can pick this up readily for them?
Absolutely.
And we'll work with our customers too, on a case-by-case basis, so.
I think Alderman Martin needed just a little clarification. The 90 days you're speaking of for the commercial?
Yes, sir.
People, commercial dumpsters, and they would have 90 days to find another provider such as Waste Management or whoever it may be?
Correct. No, no, we do, we do charge, but based on our cost of service, we're not able to recover the cost to add up a little fund that. So that's, that's why we're recommending this.
Okay, we'll move on to. Alderman Berger.
Okay, so the commercial, I'm for eliminating that, but I did have a question that came in from a constituent. He says, has there ever been a roundtable discussion among Franklin leadership to require certain businesses or businesses in general to recycle their cardboard? How can I discuss this in a forum with your leadership? And he said, you would be shocked to find out how many restaurants that do not have a cardboard bin. Most do not. Let's make it a law. Let's start this process. It's ridiculous. So to not have the recycling, so we briefly talked about that. Is there any way to address cardboard? Because we have cardboard and, and we're gonna have more and more cardboard because people shop by Amazon and households, our cardboard's picked up the last couple of years. I'm sure Dana's crazy over at his house.
I know we're looking at putting a couple of.
But for commercials.
Bins for cardboard on our site for overflow for residents that may have more cardboard than they can get in a cart, but when it comes to commercial, it's kind of driven by the industry. If there's money to be made, there would be cardboard dumpsters out there and somebody privately doing that service.
There are some communities that do not allow people to throw their cardboard away.
That conversation hasn't been part of the work we've, it has not been part of the work we've presented to you all with respect to the cost of service.
But we can spend some time investigating some possibility.
For the sake of getting on with our discussion tonight, we'll table that, but I think that's something we need to talk about because the other thing, just one other quick question. So when we have a lot of cardboard at a home and you can't get it in, you can't put it beside it then?
Correct.
That's not gonna happen anymore.
You'd be able to bring it to our facility.
Or one of the county.
Or the convenience centers.
Or one of the convenience centers.
Yeah.
Or put it in over time.
How many county convenience centers are there? Six, five, four?
I think it's like six to eight.
Six to eight, maybe six now after closing this.
I think four or five.
Okay, we can get a number for you.
All right. So county convenience centers are there for all sorts of recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One final, if we're not recovering cost, we need to eliminate the program.
We have a very small customer base relatively speaking in the commercial side.
Okay, item three, procurement award to JLD Preservation Consulting LLC of Nashville, Tennessee. The total amount of $7,950 for Hincheyville Historic District National Register listing update consulting services for the Planning and Sustainability Department.
Hi, this is a pretty simple project. We are trying to actively keep a healthy and accurate historic resource inventory for our community. It's very important. The Hincheyville National Register Historic District was listed in 1981, and now that it's almost 40 years in age, we'd like to reevaluate the district listing by updating our architectural descriptions for each of the properties and evaluate the period of significance to reflect the passing of time. So no proposals to change the boundaries at this time, although we may get some professional recommendations on how we might pursue that in the future.
Alderman Bransh.
Is this something that all of the historic district may go through, some type of review?
We're hopeful that, you know, with our current district listings to evaluate, to reflect, excuse me, adequately and accurately reflect the changes over time. Because this particular district was listed so long ago, it's one of the first I'd like to pursue.
And we are, we as a city is paying for that, so it's not like a community of people pulling this organization together or this nomination.
No, it's actually a match grant from the federal government. So the federal government through the state is participating by providing 60% of the cost. So that the cost provided there is the full cost, the city would be providing 40% of that.
Thank you.
Alderman Berger.
So we're, this cost, we're only providing 40% of it?
Yes.
Okay, of that number that you just gave us.
Correct. It's right under $8,000, so the city would be paying 40% of that.
And then the other thing is, just a question, what does this do for the city? Spending this money and doing this, what does this do for us?
Well, the city of Franklin is, you know, prizes its historic districts quite a bit, and because they age over time, just like everything else, we want to make sure that we keep an accurate inventory of those resources. They get older over time. We've had a lot of infill. We've had a lot of alterations to existing buildings. So we want to keep a check on what those historic resources are, expand the definition of historic where we need to as time passes. For example, Hincheyville's period of significance will probably be expanded by 20 years or so. So it will include 50s and 60s resources as determined by the consultant staff and the State Review Board.
And so a constituent's gonna ask me, so what, you do this? I mean, this is the kinds of questions I get. So you do this, but what does it actually do for us? Even though you count them and you take an inventory, what's the purpose of that?
Well, the purpose of keeping a resource inventory is for the city to be able to understand what resources it has historically and have different architectural styles and communicate to the community that those types of resources help contribute to the identity, the character, the intrinsic value that the community has placed on those types of things in our downtown area especially, but also those residential areas surrounding downtown.
Thanks, man.
It's economic tourism is one of the Bible things that.
Probably has to do with that too.
People that don't like preservation for preservation and enjoy the benefits of heritage and economic tourism, the tax dollars it brings forward.
Okay, we're ready to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Presentation of the Fire Department's Strategic Plan Update. Chief? Chief?
As the chiefs come up, just a quick introduction. A couple of years ago, the department embarked on a broad-based strategic plan that was developed. We did brief the board on that at that time, but there's been additional work that's happened since then. So wanted to update you on that progress and then some initiatives that may relate to that as we move forward. So both Chief Garzerek and Chief Johnson are here to take you through that, so take it away.
Thank you. We'll keep this as brief as possible. We only have three or four slides, but we wanted, we felt it very important to update the board on our strategic plan. And it's a, it's a working document, basically. It was a five-year plan. It was made up, every firefighter from the ground level up in this organization had input on this document and the improvements that they would like to see our department go through to enhance the services that we provide to the citizens and visitors in this community. And out of that document, there was about 60 goals that were established. We're about 37% complete with those goals over a five-year plan. And now we're to the component of that plan to where we have to do some operational alignment, if you will, of teams and specialized teams. We've purchased equipment, we've bought vehicles, and now it's time to implement those, those types of things at our fire station level. So I'm gonna let Chief Johnson brief you on that area.
As Chief Garzerek said, you know, we did enter this endeavor as a five-year plan. And just to go highlight some of the other accomplishments that we've had is the 95% completion of our standard operating policy. And as a result of this, we're actually working with our other city departments, HR, legal, and city administration to have this policy manual, hopefully ready to roll out here in the near future. Some other things that we've looked at during this strategic plan process that would benefit the community is a bystander CPR program. This is something that we would go into a partnership with Williamson Medical Center. Basically, the app is called Pulse Point. If someone calls, now I want to make sure that everybody understands, this is only in public places, not your private home. But if they have a 911 call where someone has sustained a heart attack or in cardiac arrest, it will alert responders that have this app to where the nearest AED is located as well as the patient. We've seen other cities that have been able to benefit from this and had some successful outcome to the visitors, the citizens, and the people that work in their community. Another thing is, we do enjoy the partnership we have with our other city departments. Our GIS department has really helped us to run our hydrant collection data more efficiently. We're able to communicate with our water department and fix problems more quicker than we have in the past. As far as some of our fire prevention and building and neighborhood services programs that we've partnered with, is recently we've established 17 new inspectors that can help on the on-shift, at the on-shift level, to help our current inspectors that are in administration working 40 hours a week. And we look to continue this program each year to enhance our inspector program. It's, one of our big projects was the career development in the fire department. So we've started some career development at the firefighter level, and they would have benchmarks that they would have to meet on an annual basis after their first year employment. And then we're adding those to the other positions as engineer, lieutenant, captain, and battalion chief. This will be things that are put in place prior to somebody being promoted to ensure that they're able to fulfill the obligations of that position prior to being appointed. And as Chief Garzerek said, some of our technical rescue programs, we've had a new hazmat, a new rescue, and another, or a technical rescue piece of equipment come into service. As part of that, we're realigning our operations, our stations to discipline-specific stations, where each station will house a specialty, for example hazmat, technical rescue, and water rescue. What this will do is help us to be more efficient in our training. Currently, all of our personnel have to go to the training center to receive the training. This will allow us to do some of the training in-house and meet the NFPA requirements or competencies, minimizing our travel across town.
I would like to add with more statement that when we started looking at this and establishing specialized teams, we had a fire lieutenant that realized that he may be moved out of a station that because he didn't meet that discipline. And he worked extremely hard to get those certifications and bring his skill levels up to where he could stay at that particular station. So when we talk about operational alignment, we've got a lot of great stories of individuals in the department that have done things to get themselves to be a part of those specialized teams. So I just wanted to say that.
Alderman Bransh.
You mentioned water, no rescue, and technical rescue. Give me an example of a technical rescue.
Any type of low angle, high angle, confined space operation that would require specialized skills that normally, well, the specialized skills are outlined in NFPA 1006 and 1670. Well, fortunately, we don't have any caves. Like, our water department, where we have workers that are working below grade, we have window washers on our buildings, we have embankments that where MVAs can occur, and we have to use low angle skills in order to bring those personnel or those patients out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Does that mean people are gonna, some of the employees may be moved around to different stations? Is that part of the implication I heard?
Yes, sir. And if there's two things about firefighters, you know, they don't like the way things are now and they don't like change. So. You know, they'll be a part of committees and come up with recommendations, but now it gets to the operational alignment of moving people around and so there may be a little bit of pushback.
What we're trying to do is ensure there's a solid foundation for this transition and that it's not a knee-jerk reaction, that it is a planned event and that all considerations are taken into account. And what we're doing is what's best for the city, for our citizens, for our visitors and people that work here, as well as our firefighters as well.
Mr. Mayor, what I heard is you all have engaged the staff. I mean, I want to make it clear and put it on the record that you all have engaged the staff in these transitions, possibilities, or these new ideas, they have been part of the discussion.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five. Thanks, chiefs, and discuss irrigation metering structure.
As Michelle and Mark come up here, this is a follow-up to a couple of other discussions we've had over the last year or so, as we look at options around how we structure irrigation metering and how those fees work. One of the things we heard in some of the discussions from the board is that initial upfront costs associated with obtaining the irrigation meter was cost prohibitive. And so what we have tried to do is look at some structure that might give us a more realistic return on that cost in terms of the savings someone who is a irrigator would experience. But there's a policy discussion to go with this, is how you, how much you want to tailor costs in the irrigation structure and how you want that to affect conservation goals as well as this idea of, well, what's realistic to expect in terms of recapture of costs? So we've tried to structure a proposal that gets at that, and that's what Michelle and Mark will present to you tonight, is an approach that we think sort of balances maintaining the fact that irrigation is more of a luxury compared to the basic needs of water use, but that also helps us look at a more realistic recapture of the savings that somebody who uses irrigation would experience and how that might be realistic. Are we ready with the technology? All right, take it away.
Okay, so this is kind of just a revamped presentation that we've had in front of y'all a little bit, so we've added some stuff to the end of it. So we're gonna kind of start with a summary of where we've, of where we've come to this point, kind of the recommendations that we had. We have a residential three-quarter inch meter data, usage data that we've reviewed, so we'll present that. And then our proposed changes in rate structure. And then we did some return on investment calculations and then we'll kind of summarize everything. So we initially brought this to you back last year, last fall. It's been a while. And we talked about the issue being that water use for irrigation doesn't make it to the sewer. And to kind of combat that, we have an inclining rate structure for water, so meaning the more water you use, the more you pay, but declining for sewer, meaning that the more water you use, the less sewer you pay to kind of account for that loss and that water loss balance. So our current irrigation meter fee, both the impact fee plus the installation fee, is a little over $3,900. is a little over $3,900. And you had given us direction in November, at the November board meeting, to investigate kind of a potential revision, lowering of the impact fee to make it a little bit more equitable for the customer. So we'll kind of go into the residents that we unwound or drive, that we looked at, the specific usage data, so three-quarter inch residential meter. We evaluated the data from 2013 to 2018. We estimated the volume of water that was used that didn't contribute the flow to the sanitary sewer, so because he doesn't, this particular person doesn't have a separate irrigation meter, there was a little bit of estimation that occurred. We estimated that it was about a little over $1,500, didn't reach the sanitary sewer, and so over that five-year period, it was a little over $300 annually. So using those numbers, the existing return on investment would be about 12.3 years, so not as, not as equitable for a residential customer. So what we did is we took your advice and we recalculated that using those same numbers based on a five-year return of, return on investment, and that's what, that's what gave us the $1,590, $1,590 impact fee.
So there, there's a, a lot of ways that we can approach how we charge for irrigation water. As, as Michelle had said, in November, we had spoken with you all, you asked us to look into modifying the impact fee and take a look at the rate structure. So we did just that. The tables on the screen right now, I'll, I'll talk through real quickly, but on the left side of the screen, you'll see our existing rate structure for water on the top and for sanitary, sanitary sewer on the bottom. So if you did not have an irrigation meter and you used 10,500 gallons per month, you would be billed for, and that's one SFUE by, for example. On water, you would pay $61.24 a month. On sanitary sewer, whether you watered your lawn or not, you would pay just under $76 for, total $137. And if you use two SFUEs of water, then that's about $260. What we, out of our discussions and what we're proposing tonight is, is really kind of a jumping off point, is lowering that impact fee from $3,900 a month, or, excuse me, $3,900 to $100 to $1,500. So a significant reduction in that impact fee, and then adjusting the cost per thousand gallons of water due to the fact that it's luxury water, or irrigation water. So what we have on the tables on the right are that increase over domestic water price per thousand gallons, and you end up with your proposed bill at the bottom for one SFUE of $85.49 per month relative to the, the item on the left, which is $137.19 per month. So it's a significant savings by installing an irrigation meter, knowing that you have a $1,500 impact fee. So that's a lot of data to, yes, sir?
I, I can't, I, I'm not sure I can comprehend this chart, but that's not anyone's fault but mine, but I just want to know simple, if you, you're proposing to take the purchase price of an irrigation meter down to 1,500.
Correct.
Figuring, having figured that that's about a five-year break even for someone who irrigates in a way that would be commonly done in Franklin?
That was our starting point, based on the, the customer at Winder Drive.
Okay. And then, is there a reason to think that the customer data that you used is representative of the city as a whole?
You're, you're gonna have pretty wide varying degrees of irrigation.
Okay, so we might, I mean, we might, we might have come in on the low, we might have come in on the high, but it's, but you're talking about taking it down by almost two-thirds?
Correct.
Okay. I was with you there, I got that. So we may or may not have used the correct sample.
Correct.
For the pay, the, the, the break even, but it, it would either be two years or 10 years, or somewhere in between.
Correct.
At some point, you, you are better off to have done it. I'm with you there.
Yes, sir.
What, are you proposing as well that we charge a different rate per gallon of water that goes through the irrigation?
Correct.
Meter? And are we suggesting that you would pay more for that, or less for that?
We would suggest that you would pay more for that.
So I would pay more for water that I spray on my grass than that I make my coffee with?
Correct.
Now, explain that to me.
That, what we're endeavoring to do here is a conservation.
So it's a deterrence?
A deterrence. So what we don't.
You gotta really want to use the water.
You want to use, you're gonna want to use the water. Now, the way that we're proposing it, if you don't.
It doesn't, that, that just kind of, to me, feels like giving with one hand and taking with the other.
I don't disagree with you. Oops, excuse me, let me get, let's go down to the next, the next chart here. So if we could summarize real quickly, we're reducing the impact fee from 3,906 as we talk to $1,500. So that, that loss of impact, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, keep going.
So that loss of impact fee is right around $2,000, or what was that number? $2,400, right? So.
Okay.
We're not getting that impact fee. So we, in, in some, in some sense, we're trying to recover the loss of that impact fee over time.
Okay, now, this is a, this is a, a utility that is obligated by law to break even.
Correct.
Okay. And so we have spent, in the 21 years I've been here, and that sounds insane to say out loud, but in the time that I've been here, we have regularly gone back and figured out what our rates ought to be so that we do come in at break even, and we've done pretty well.
Yes.
Okay. So I understand that there might be a loss of revenue, maybe, but I guess you'd have to sell more taps to make the same, to make the same revenue. And maybe you would if you lowered the price, but we're, I guess you're concerned that consumption will then go up.
Correct.
Okay? But can you, can you justify legally charging different rates to the same customer based upon where the water winds up?
There are, there are a lot of communities that have different irrigation rates than domestic water rates.
But are they more?
Yes.
Yeah, because irrigation water is considered somewhat of a luxury compared to waters, water you use to consume.
I know, but it, it doesn't really change what it costs us to make it, and it, it's, we're just raising our profit margin.
Right.
Right?
No, I don't know that we're raising our profit margin.
On, on, we're raising our profit margin, and not, and I, when I say that, that's, that's a loose term of art. We're not actually making a profit, but we're raising the rate, we're raising the marginal rate on, on water that is.
On the unit cost, yes, sir. That's going on the ground. So one of the, and if we go back up to this, this, this graphic on the screen, so.
You want to go up one?
No, I'm sorry.
I understand, I mean, but because it's a, and I understand, they're not paying sewer, got it?
Right.
Okay. But it just seems to me like the whole thing has always been driven by the cost to deliver the gallons that we expected to have to deliver.
Correct.
And the, and the cost of the amount of wastewater that we expected to have to treat. Those have always driven all of these rates.
Yes.
This just seems like.
It's a little different.
Yeah, this doesn't feel the same, and I.
So we, we, yeah, no, I understand.
Facts are, facts are not, facts are more important than feelings, but I, I'm struggling with the fundamental fairness here.
I understand. So if we, if we have an impact fee currently, so there's multiple components to any rate structure, so we, we have an impact fee to buy into the system. And in our irrigation meters, we charge currently $3,900, which includes the installation. We're, we're reducing that impact fee, so we're, we're losing that in terms of buying into the system. So the, the increased rate structure, not only is it a deterrent or is it a conservation rate structure, but it also helps to recover that loss of impact. So, you know, you look at the number of months based on this example, and there's literally an infinite number of examples you can have based on the volume, volume of usage, but it would take 99 months or.
This, this seems to put more variables into the equation than, for example, doing a seasonal rate for just, just taking a seasonal rate and saying, we know that there are irrigation months, and we know that we, we, we could probably do as good of figuring out without ever knowing precisely, but figuring out roughly what any given person's consumption goes up. You could sample, I don't, how many customers do we have on water and sewer that we serve both?
Serve both, about 19,000.
Okay, so if you survey, does our data allow us to survey 1,000 of them? For 12 months?
We have data on all of them, so we can.
Okay, so if we, if we sampled one out of 20 from around the city, picking by, you know, getting, getting the right spread of property values, we could arrive at roughly what the spike in use is, and we could apply some kind of rational, you know, basis to the, how much of that is obviously, or, or is presumably car washing and, and irrigation. And instead of doing this multiple moving switches, which may or may not hit the target, we could say, we're just going to discount the sewer rate by X percent between this month and that, based upon a sample of 1,000, 1,000 households across 12 months, and that's, that seems to me like a, a way to arrive more likely close to the actual cost of having done it.
We, we actually, we, we had actually discussed that, and it's often referred to as the winter pricing model.
Right.
And you essentially take an average of the water usage during winter months and apply that volume to sewer usage during the summer. In doing research through American Water Works Association and other communities, you know, the, the best practice that we've come, that we've been able to determine is go through, go to metering. It gives us the precision on the water usage, helps us understand precisely what the irrigation demands are.
But that, that only, that only provides relief to people who have the capacity to put up $1,500 to get in the game.
Right.
If I don't have $1,500 to pony up for an irrigation meter, I'm stuck paying undoubtedly for sewer use that I didn't actually use. So we've created a free rider problem. I'm paying sewer rates that have been calculated and collected at a rate that actually subsidizes the whole enterprise at my expense. Am I, am I, am I getting any of this analytically or conceptually wrong?
No, you're, you're correct.
Part of it is how you, from a policy standpoint, how you want to approach it.
Okay.
A winner, a winner average approach is imprecise in that it assumes that your usage is the same.
Is it more precise than this move the meter rate down to some?
Sure it is. If you encourage the use of a meter, you know actually how much someone uses.
That, that's true, but again, how many people tomorrow can opt into a $1,500 meter just to get the benefit of the different rate?
Well, and that's what we're trying.
Which actually turns out to be higher per gallon.
Right. But that's, that's exactly what we're trying to respond to, is this thought that the 3,900 was cost prohibitive. So let's find a way to bring that down.
I'm not a mathematician or an economist. Here's my thing. At some point, if we did this, you're going to have to sell this. And if someone came to my door and said, have we got a deal for you? You give us $1,500, and we will sell you water at a higher rate than you're currently paying. What do you think?
But you don't.
I would tell them to get off my lawn.
But you're not, you're not telling, Alderman McClendon, you're not telling the whole story when you say that. Because you don't have to pay the sewer rate, which is significantly higher per gallon. So the whole equation is not just, you pay a little more for the water, you don't pay anything for the sewer treatment. By metering it, you can do a more precise measure, and you don't pay for that service you don't need, which offsets that cost, and that's why you pay it back in about five years, based on this example.
Well, based upon those people, that sample, but the first thing that has to happen for me to get the benefit of any of that is I gotta write a $1,500 check.
Correct.
And if I don't have that, and many don't, then I am forever subsidizing unfairly the rest of the whole, everyone else that did have that money, and, and the system as a whole.
And, and this is, this is the example that we've brought to you. Right now, we're at 3,906 to get in, to buy into the system.
And we're not selling them. How many have we sold in 12 months?
I don't know the, that number.
And we're, and that's, that's, and, and those people, I doubt seriously that anyone who didn't pay it, didn't, didn't, anyone who didn't buy the $3,900 meter, I doubt very seriously that they thought to themselves, well, my recovery is 12 years. If only it were five, I would jump in. That's not what happened. What happened is people said, I'm just getting the mortgage and the car payments made and the insurance paid. I don't have $1,500 to eventually recover the, the difference in the sewer I don't pay. That, that's, that's what's happened. And so I, I just, I get that there's some imprecision either way, but there's a fundamental unfairness to granting people a, the benefit of actually paying for what they use only if they can first pay you $1,500. So how many, how many $3,900 meters did we sell last year?
I, I, I don't have that number.
A dozen, 100?
I, I couldn't find out, I don't, I don't have that number.
We don't know?
We do know.
We can find out, we have the answer tonight.
And I'm not trying, look.
No, I, I understand.
All I want is a fair thing that gets us the right result for the most people that we can. It just seems to me like charging people $1,500 so that they can actually pay what they ought to be paying, that, that's how that feels to me. And raising the rate, at the, raising the, the, the per gallon rate at the same time that you do that, while I understand the backend is, you're not paying sewer rate on, on that, I get it, and I understand, to some extent, creating a deterrence to overuse and burdening the system. I get that too, because I've been here when we had, when we had to tell people, don't water your yard no matter what you're willing to pay.
Oh, yeah.
Did that. I just don't know that I'm not willing to suffer the imprecision to the extent it exists in a winter rate that benefits everyone. It, it is, is the single best argument against the winter rate philosophy, its perceived imprecision? And if that's true, then don't you make up for it by the fundamental fairness that it applies to everyone?
That's part of this whole policy, policy discussion. So, you know, talking about winter rates or having an irrigation meter structure is, you know, we, we stepped through the, the winter pricing model previously. This is the path we started going down. I understand your points. I, I would like to add that, you know, there is a complete loss of impact fee if we don't charge an impact fee.
Okay, but we'll, we'll.
That needs to be.
Sweep that into the next rate study.
That needs to be captured.
We'll sweep that into the next rate study when the line item for revenue from meters goes away, assuming that that number is not nominal as it is. I mean, I, if.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you if I may, Alderman McClendon, because we have a few other people who want to say something, and.
I, I think I've made the point.
You've made your points. I want to give us about 10 more minutes on this, and we'll bring it back for more discussion, because I know we'll spend quite a bit of time on the last item. And I plan on being out of here close to quarter to seven tonight. So I, I have Alderman Burger first, followed by Alderman Speedy. You got 10 minutes, so compact it, please.
I'm not going to go through all this, but ditto Dana, I, I've struggled with this. We met before, we talked about some of these things. I have the same issue, because we are building smaller and smaller and smaller lots in our city. And it, I'm on one of those lots. It's not, I'll use myself as an example, it's never gonna pay me to get a meter. It's not, because I can't recoup my costs for a good 10 years. And that, and I'm not unique. This is, we, we have way too many smaller lots, and this is gonna affect these people. So everything you've said, Dana, I'm, I, I hear you, and I, I just want to say ditto to all of that. I think we've got to work in a different way. I'm, I'm looking at this scenario, and I'll pass these things out, it's just some analysis. These are assumptions, I, I went over these with you before, but they're just some assumptions I think we need to be talking about. If everybody take one of these and pass it down. I can give you some of these later, but I'm not specifically a numbers person, but it racked my brain, sitting there looking at this. And I did have a little bit of help with a very analytical person who I said, are my assumptions correct? So we were looking at this. I, I think there are too many people in this city that will never realize there are savings on it. So I think you're right, Eric, we were talking about, this is a policy. What do we want to do here? Is it about irrigation, is it about across the board, trying to help everybody with a fair cost, or is it a conservation? Or is it conservation? What is it? We've got a lot of things to, to answer, but if you take the net present value, you know, same thing, Dana, you're absolutely right. If I gave you a thousand dollars and say, here's a thousand dollars, you know, give me a, give me a thousand dollars, and I'll give it back to you in five years, you expect some interest, you expect something for that money. In five years, I'm still going to get that thousand dollars back, and I'm not going to realize any cost savings there, or any, 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 anything other than the fif, the thousand dollars, or the fifteen hundred dollars in this case. So it, where's the value in that? So the values today, of the money today, and the value of future savings, it, it just, I, I had a big problem with this whole thing, and I still have a big problem with it, because I don't think that meters are, I'm not sure meters are the answer. I think there's more work to be done here. And the winter rates, even if we did a winter rate, everybody seems to use a little bit more water in the summer, you know, you're hot, you're sweaty, you might be taking more showers. So maybe we just extend the winter rate, and then add tack on so much for everyone. But I, I don't know what we do. I don't know if we signal out, how many people actually have the, have the irrigations? How do we, how do we monitor that? We talked about the software program. Dana mentioned winter rates. There's some other things to be done here, and, and I'm just really not comfortable with the meters.
Perhaps you can share this electronically, and we can have an opportunity to discuss this at the next work session.
Yeah, and I, I just even did a little printout here, but I didn't print it out, but what is, what is.
Nobody's seen it, except, I don't think any of the other Aldermen have seen it that I'm aware of.
No, I just, I just did it this afternoon, about three o'clock. And what net present value, you know, what is that, and, and how does that play out? And then tried to run some calculations on this too, comparing the city, comparison for the city for sewer hookup fees and whatever. I'll, I'll send these by electronic, but I think we've got a lot more work.
So here's my thoughts, we're essentially talking about fairness for water and sewer, right? And we've got an existing rate structure that we could maybe tweak to make it more fair. I don't think we're ever going to make everybody happy on this. Same thing with the winter pricing model, probably never, ever going to make anybody happy. And I do agree that probably the most accurate way would be to have irrigation meters. We have specific, concrete data, and we can tell that. I'm probably with Dana, though, I don't think we're going to have enough people, even if they saw a four or six-year breakeven point, pay the fifteen hundred dollars for that. But my thoughts would be, the people that would and could benefit, probably should buy the meter, and as more and more of those people came on board, and they truly were paying irrigation costs and not sewer, the ones that didn't have the fifteen hundred dollars, will essentially even be heavily subsidizing that sewer even more and more and more. So I just think we could get into a downward spiral, where the people who could afford the irrigation meters are benefiting from this program even more than the ones that couldn't afford it, so. And I agree, even with the irrigation water, I'm fine charging them more for that. We're already having an inclining rate structure. We already try to tell our kids to turn the water off when they brush their teeth, or quit taking thirty-minute showers, but that doesn't happen, right?
We all become our fathers.
Yes. So I, I do think the irrigation meters are the fairest, but I, I don't see it actually being implemented at the other city.
We've got a few more minutes, if anybody else wants to make a comment. Alderman Barnhill.
Well, the first comment I would make is that I'm not sure that I'm dittoing everything that's been said. We need to look and see what the impact is on the overall revenue being generated or not being generated. That's, and that's the key. I mean, I don't, you know, I, I'm sitting here trying to, to imagine that this, that there's a, this world of people out there, that suddenly this is a tremendous issue, and they want to water their lawns. I mean, I mean, Alderman McClendon, he's been twenty-one, I've been here twenty-seven, and we've never had, we've never had an issue of this magnitude where somebody wants to water their lawn. Now, we've had issues where a new house has come in, and they've watered for the, for the year to get the shrubbery going, and they argued about the water rates, and they weren't even on the Franklin system. They were on the HB and TS system. And that was their, and they were arguing about their water rates that they were paying. So I'm not sure this is even that big of an issue. I would say this, I suspect that I would lean towards the metering. If you, if, if you, if you studied, and you look at the water rates, and there was a payback there, and that's what you think you want to do, and you want to do an excessive amount of watering? I mean, I, I don't want to, you know, tell too much, but I have never watered a lawn. Never. I don't think. Maybe it's rain, but I've never watered a lawn. So that's not, that's not something that's high on the priority list, but we need to be real careful about the revenue that we're pulling out of the stream. And we're looking at a hundred and thirty million dollar wastewater treatment plant, and we're looking at removing water tap fees, or lowering water tap fees in this particular environment that we're in right now. So, so that's the thing that I would be looking at. But, but I don't mind having a water tap fee, and a water tap. If somebody wants to run a line to their house, and they want to have a meter that, that does that, and they want to water their lawn, they're probably not going to wash their car with it. I mean, I think that was mentioned. They're probably not going to wash their car with that. That's going to go through the other meter. But, no, you, I, I just, I just don't, I just don't find this to be this big of an issue as to, you know, whatever.
The, the last thing I've, as we bring this back, I think the thing we need you to kind of give us guidance on is, what is your policy goal? First of all, is this, is this an issue we need to try to fix? Is it an issue? We have a, a couple people that bring this issue up, but it's not a widespread issue, honestly. You know, is, is the rate structure we've got adequate? Do we want to, we can mess with the rate structure, we can mess with the irrigation fee, we can look at an averaging. All of those have different implications for conservation, for revenue, and for just how it aligns with the, the costs that are already in, in the operation of the utility. We're trying to, we're trying to pick off issues and identify them, that's why we gave you this as something to respond to. You've given us some feedback on it. But I think as you look at it, try to give us a sense of what's important for you to, what are we trying to fix? I guess is the question I would ask you. And, and, and you don't need to answer that tonight, but if you can give us some feedback, that helps us figure out what, if anything, we need to do with the rate structure we have. I think we see fewer and fewer people irrigating. I think it's just the change that has happened in how people operate. But, you know, we want to be responsive to a need, if you think it's, if, if, whatever that need is, tell us, and we'll be glad to try to structure some options off of that.
Okay, we're going to move on, and we're going to talk about draft resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty-three, a resolution providing staff with funding direction, and I'm going to say that again, with funding direction for the home-raising project developed by the United States Army Corps of Engineers as part of the Harpeth River feasibility study. And after comments from Mr. Stuckey and Mr. Holsen, I'm just going to start my left and go down that way and get your ideas.
So just, just a quick introductory comment as Paul jumps into it. We're bringing this back to you now, because we're going to need to make a decision related to this program, and what participation, if any, the city has. I would expect by the end of summer. We have already enrolled in the program, so the good news is, we've provided a vehicle through which voluntarily, citizens that are in these impacted areas can get sixty-five percent of the cost of the elevation of their home, paid for by the Army Corps, by federal dollars. The question that's before you, and that we put to you in the capital investment program, is what to do with that remaining thirty-five percent? We've given you some general options on how to look at that. As we look at the CIP itself, I would just reflect back what we saw in priorities, which was Battle Avenue was a higher priority from your CIP. And then we've also got an emergency repair in Maplewood, that also, I believe, scored higher, but also has an urgency with its timing. And both of those would, would likely eat up the capacity that you have in your stormwater fund as a funding source. So that leaves this most likely, if we look at your priorities as a guide, with, with a general capital being the, the way we would fund any participation from the city. And so that's, that's the context that we're bringing this to you. Think you probably need a little time to chew on that. So that's why we're reintroducing it to you, and also want to update the numbers, because there are a few more properties that are eligible from when we last looked at it. And so I'll let Paul kind of carry through that, and then we'll be glad to discuss and answer any other questions.
Okay, so we've talked about this project numerous times, so I'm not going to get into all the details, but it generally involves thirty-six homes. Essentially, the US Army Corps of Engineers or the federal government would pay sixty-five percent, and we need to identify the funding source for the remaining thirty-five percent. The estimated cost is around four billion dollars. We're providing three options. One option where the homeowner solely pays that thirty-five remaining percent. An option where the city pays that thirty-five percent, or some type of a sharing option, which we show a fifty-fifty split in this resolution here. As Eric indicated, looking back at the rankings in the non-weighted, I wrote those down to share with you just as a reminder. In the non-weighted, Battle Avenue scored a four, Maplewood was a fifteen, the US Army Corps of Engineers Home-Raising Project was thirty-two. In the weighted, Battle Avenue was two, Maplewood was twenty-three, and the US Army Corps Home-Raising was fourteen. And as Eric indicated, Battle Avenue rising to the top, and Maplewood being an emergency repair, is ultimately what we put in that budget to try to get those projects moving forward. And so with that said, we're just seeking your direction on how to proceed with the funding, and it was brought up during that budget and finance meeting that bring this forward, and we can keep this discussion going, because as Eric has indicated, we need to, need to make a decision to keep the project moving.
And, and part of the importance of that is, if we're going to ask people whether they want to be in it voluntarily, they need to know what their financial obligation would be. So the sooner we can get that resolved or figured out, then we can share that information back out to the citizens that are impacted and, and have that decision to make, and, and they can start thinking through that for themselves as well.
Okay, I didn't mean to insult you, Alderman Peterson, but I'd said before I was going to start here and just let everybody make their comment, because I think we're trying to develop some direction as far as the thirty-five percent. So Alderman Bransford, and then we'll just go down the line.
I'm so happy that we have this opportunity to give some aid and help to these homeowners. I'm more on the shared side. I'm not completely in the camp of the thirty-five percent being completely paid by the homeowners, but I think a sharing of that thirty-five percent in some way, fifty-fifty could be okay, but I was thinking more like twenty-fifteen, where we would pay fifteen percent, and maybe the homeowner twenty percent. That's where I am on that.
I've, I've looked at, from, I guess, for quite some time now, at a shared cost, and the city not paying the entire amount, whether it's fifty-fifty or not, but that's, the shared cost, the percentage could be worked out at some point in time. The policy that we're looking at is the share, is option three for me, and that's sixty-five from the feds, and a shared cost for the balance of the thirty-five percent between the city and the property owner themselves. So that's, that's where I am. Not necessarily have I settled on any particular percentage yet to look at.
A lot of the constituents, my constituents, have weighed in on this and are not for the city paying the thirty-five percent. They don't think it's fair to everybody else. The, these homes have been there for, some of them, forty years. They have seen floods, we've all seen floods. If you live in Franklin, you've seen a flood, probably in your yard. I agree with, with Pearl. I think, I think that, you know, we need to be willing to contribute something, but we can't do away with all of our funding, our stormwater funding, when we've got Battle Avenue and these other things you mentioned, Paul. They've been on the books and in our agenda for several years, and I just don't think it's fair to those people who have been waiting to suddenly jump in and do away with their projects to do something else until we have the funding.
I, today, we have different stormwater regulations than we had in the sixties and seventies. Huge difference. These homes wouldn't be built today. I'm not sure we can go back and fix problems that were in the seventies, sixties, fifty-sixties and seventies. I, I just don't think that that's our responsibility to do. You know, they said, well, the city allowed it. Well, you know, let's, let's go back to the eighteen hundreds, would the city allow in those days, too? I mean, I don't know, where do you cut the line? Where do you stop it? You can't. So, you know, I, I'm all for the city participating and acting as a project-sponsored administrator, so I would pick option one. I might be able to be convinced to do option three, but I might be hard-pressed to do that, but I certainly would not agree with option two. My, my option is one. My second choice would be option three.
I, I want to say two or three things. One is that there have been many, many projects, especially some very expensive ones over the years, where property owners have not been required to pay anything in on projects that increase their property values. I'm thinking specifically of what we think of the streetscape, other than the very first one that was on Main Street, where the property owners did pay a, a special tax for that. Everyone else, including Columbia Avenue, where there's no extra traffic capacity or anything like that, it's just looks, beautifications, thank you, but it definitely increased property values there. Hillsborough Road, even, it increased property values there. They never paid any money in. The upcoming Franklin Road is going to be the same type of thing. So they, they definitely have increased property values. I, I do want to, to say, even though my preference would be that the city would pay the entire thirty-five percent, I, I could go with a, a shared, I would probably tend to have a pretty high share for the city. But also, keep in mind, these are one of our sets of moderately housed price, moderately priced housing also. But also, whenever we compare this to some other things that we are looking at in stormwater, and by the way, stormwater now has personnel and operations taking up the great, great majority of the stormwater. There's, there's been a, a time or two that we have paid on projects, but really, whenever you look at that over the last at least five years, stormwater really has not paid, paid projects. They have paid, they have paid personnel and, and operations there. But as I say, even though my, my personal feeling would be that the city would pay the entire thirty-five percent, I could live, you know, with the sharing. I do know also that the price would be different for different houses. So some people would be paying, you know, I think we kind of figured out, it might be about, maybe not a thousand dollars, a ten, a hundred thousand dollars a house, it might be a hundred, ten thousand dollars a house now, if we, that we've got thirty-six, thirty-six homes and everything. But that could, that could really be different for different people. And there, there, as I say, there are many people that are living in moderately priced housing. We were talking about having an extra fifteen hundred dollars to pay. They might, they would be paying a lot more than that if they, if they have to contribute a very large part of the thirty-five percent.
I do think it's great that we're participating in this, in this program, and probably, Alderman Martin, I've had a lot of people talk to me about just the expense to the city. And so probably for that reason, I will support option one. The other thing that's been brought up to my attention is, you know, right now it's thirty-six homes, five years, what if this expands? If we set a precedent here? I, I do think that. I do think that some of the other projects, yes, they've improved property values, but those have still been public infrastructure projects. I view this as worse, the city would be specifically improving those specific homes. There's nothing to prevent them from selling the home day one after it's raised and making a profit. I do think they're going to benefit from having reduced flood insurance premiums. If anything, I would support, if the city was going to participate, it was some type of loan to where it could be repaid from the increased cash flow from reduced flood premiums, and then maybe that loan is repaid, you know, once the home is sold or transferred. So I guess, I just view it as a great voluntary program. I've had some friends that paid a hundred percent when they raised their homes, and so, you know, I don't think we're going to retroactively go back and be able to help them, unfortunately. So, I guess, option one.
I know we have some speakers on this subject, so I'm not going to belabor my explanation, but I will say that I tend to go with option three, and I've been pretty consistent.
Well, we are, I would prefer option two. Depending upon what we did, if we did option three, I might go along. I think that we're dealing with, in many cases, homes that are, that are facing a loss of value, a rapid loss of value in the absence of participating in this program. I think that many of those homes are in the more affordable price range in our community, and, you know, I go to a meeting every month about affordable housing at seven-thirty in the morning. Thank you, Mayor. And so I think that we should, we should pay attention to the fact that not doing something here could have unintended consequences. You could be, you'd be looking at the possibility of longtime residents being forced out because they could not afford it. And I do, I do understand, and I can acknowledge, that there's a bit of a difference between something like the Columbia Avenue Beautification Project, which I railed against, and doing projects, putting money into projects on individual homeowners. There is, there is less community benefit, less direct community benefit, at least apparent there. But I think that it's not necessarily the case that participating in this project, however it gets done, necessarily immediately renders value to the home so much as prevents it from collapsing in value. You've got people whose homes were in fact flooded, who were they to go out and try to sell the home now, might find that they had a very difficult time selling it as anything other than a lot, if that, if they could do that. And then you have, and I don't know, this is maybe not exactly on this particular item, but we got this letter from this gentleman that his, his home's not even in the proposed plan either way, and he's really in a catch-twenty-two where he's being forced to raise his home by codes, but he's not being compensated by his insurance company to do that, and now he's looking at losing everything. You know, the City of Franklin does not act as an insurer. We do not act as, I don't want to say charity, but we are not the insurer of all, of all loss and casualty that someone may suffer as a homeowner. On the other hand, we do a lot of things with the community's money that benefit some people more directly than others. And so I can live with and will advocate for option two preferably, or option three. Option one is going to render some harsh results because there will be people who will not be able to participate, who may be forced from their home, who may actually be put in a position where they lose huge amounts of their equity, and someone who has the good fortune to be able to come in and pluck it up like a, you know, in a predatory way is the, is the beneficiary of the, of the, of the, of participation in the project. I mean, in other words, you could have, you'd have a speculator come in and buy up a home only because they had the wherewithal to participate in the project, and they would be the ones to flip it and get the full benefit, having watched a homeowner who's been there for decades forced out because they couldn't write the check. And that would be a tragedy to have people who've been here for a long time displaced for want of being able to participate in the project because we picked option one, thinking we were doing them some favor.
Okay, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to go ahead and get the speakers that are here tonight, and we're glad to welcome Commissioner Betsy Hester. Betsy, we'll give you a couple of minutes, and just to alert those that follow Commissioner Hester, we'll have Albert Cox followed by Martin Dunn, followed by Josh Marcus, Ben Johnson, and Jody Jowden. I hope I didn't butcher that. So, we'll give you a couple of minutes each, and we, so Commissioner Hester.
Thank you. I am Betsy Hester, and I don't directly live in the city limits, but I am in the urban growth boundary, and I do have a special friend from my church who does live on Ewingville Drive. I am not going to presume to tell you how to vote on this thirty-five percent. That is entirely up to you. I would ask for clarification on the sixty-five percent from the Army Corps of Engineers because there is, I understand, a four-and-a-half-month deadline, which is, four-and-a-half months is nothing really when you have to get facts and figures together, you have to see your banker, what have you. I do know that when we were looking, with your kind help from the City of Franklin, at Meadow Green there off of Hillsborough Road, we did offer loans to those residents at a low interest rate, and those loans were tied to the deed. I would just possibly, I am going to presume to say that that might be a possibility that you might consider, but there are just so many questions. How many, the deadline, how many estimates would a homeowner have to have? So, anyway, thank you for this opportunity, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, the four-month deadline, or this summer deadline of what we're trying to do, is really so that we can start approaching property owners. We will then work with the Army Corps of Engineer and those property owners that are interested with stepping them through the process. How many quotes do you have to get? Will the Army Corps go out and do it for bids? We also have some of those questions, but the fundamental question is, right now, is what are we willing to contribute, and what are the property owners going to be willing to contribute? And then, once we have that decision made, there will be a ton of public meetings and outreach and working directly with these impacted residents, and there will be plenty of time to figure out the financing, et cetera, with the project.
So, that four-month piece is really just our own deadline to try to make a decision so that we can get information out to residents and help them make, deal with these details and make those kind of decisions. So, that's just a timeframe we've put on ourselves as a best estimate.
Mr. Cox?
Yes. Okay. I'm Albert Cox. I live at 182 Lancaster Drive, most of you I've met in the past, and I appreciate all the time that you've put into this and discussions. However, there's, I think there's a lot of information that you really don't have that we need to take a look at, and I really can't do justice on all the data that's out there in two minutes, so I'm going to try to summarize it. And I do have the summaries from the National Weather Service, NOAA, as well as the USGS Services that I'll put into the records for you. First of all, I know there's been some discussions on that when we bought our property, and we bought in the floodplain, that we were willing to take that risk. Well, yes, we did take a risk. However, we took a risk in what the Army Corps of Engineers and everybody else had told us. Okay? I have an actual survey of my property and my house that states what the ultimate high-water level is and where in my house it would come to. The flood of two thousand and ten hit that mark. There's been only one other time in history, and this is from eighteen eighty-six, that the Harpeth River has crested anywhere near what it did in two thousand and ten, and that was in nineteen forty-eight, when it crested at thirty-five-point-one feet. The two thousand and ten flood, it crested at thirty-five-point-three feet. Not much of a difference, one-point-two inches on it. And so, we have not done anything to contribute to the raising of the flood level in the areas that we've had. What has been the major cause or change between nineteen forty-eight and two thousand and ten along the Harpeth River? It's been urban growth. Homeowners didn't cause the urban growth. We didn't go out and develop subdivisions and run water into the Harpeth River, saying that, oh, the quickest way to get to the, to keep their properties dry is to run the water directly into the river, no detention ponds, a lot of impervious surfaces. That's not on us. Also, there was a letter that, from the Army Corps of Engineers that came out in May of two thousand and eighteen. The Army Corps of Engineers stated that the two thousand and ten flood exceeded records by forty-three percent. Okay. The records from a hundred and thirty-seven years from the National Geographic, Geological Services, and NOAA puts a change in the record at one-point-two inches. That's less than a half a percent. Where did the Army Corps of Engineers come up with these numbers from? They still haven't explained any of that. So, the homeowners are not responsible for where these numbers came from. We've lived there, we've taken care of our property, we bought property based on what we were given, which is good data evidently, since the Army Corps of Engineers in nineteen sixty-nine said the ultimate high-water level was at an elevation, I don't remember exactly what it was, and the survey in my house said what it was, and by golly, we hit it. And that's a hundred and thirty-seven years. Water has not been any higher than that. So, the only thing that's going to change is urban growth and development along the Harpeth. That's going to cause that water to level, a raise, and that's not going to be a fault of the citizens. I think the funding should be, by the city, the full thirty-five percent because we have no other recourse than to go that route because we were not at fault for it. Thank you for your time.
I live at 147 Lancaster Drive for the past forty-five years. And one of the things I want to comment on is the fact that the city oftentimes spends money that only benefits a handful of people. Take like the dog park. I don't even own a dog. It hadn't benefited me at all. Go out to the baseball park, and all the kids playing baseball. That hadn't benefited me. I don't have any little kids. So, I mean, I think you have to get away from this notion that anything you do has to benefit everybody in the city. The, the city issued a building permit for my lot at 147 Lancaster Drive in nineteen seventy-three, and they apparently assumed there wouldn't be any problem with flooding. When the house was built and I moved to town, I bought that house, assuming there wasn't any flood problems. Well, in March of seventy-five proved us both wrong because I got three feet of water in my garage, and ever since then, I've been keeping an eye on that river, and I've had water in my front yard many times, but in two thousand and ten is when it really got bad and I got two feet of water in my house. That was only a fifty-year flood. We know there's a hundred-year flood coming, and it's, if it comes, it's going to be seven feet higher than this past flood. Well, I'm telling you, that's a matter of safety. Safety for me, my wife, and my property. So, you know, I think that has to be considered. The other thing is, if the average cost of raising a house is a hundred thousand dollars, and the owner is responsible, is going to be responsible for thirty-five percent, that's thirty-five thousand dollars. Many of us are retired, and thirty-five thousand dollars is a chunk of money to be able to pay for just based on your retirement from Social Security. So, I think that needs to be considered also. In talking with some of the owners of property that are on this list, I suspect that even if the city was to pay the thirty-five thousand, or, well, thirty-five percent, but probably thirty-five thousand, and the Corps paid the rest of it, and there was no cost to the owner, there's going to be a great many of those people who are not even going to take advantage of that. So, the cost to the city will not be affected by those people. So, the total cost to the city won't be as much as you think it is. A lot of the people don't want to be inconvenienced by being out of their house and having the house raised five or six feet. So, I think you need to consider that also, that the cost just may not be as much as you are envisioning. Thank you.
Mr. Marcus?
Ben Johnson. Followed by...
I'm the young man that you was talking about. I had a house fire January seventh over off of Ewingville. We went to restore the home to the way we had it, and the city said that we must raise our home. Insurance says that is not in your, is not covered because of the fire. So, as of right now, I'm paying a hundred percent out of pocket, so a hundred thousand dollars if that's the case. And that's the other problem. There's no, no one telling me exactly how to do it, who can do it. All I'm being told by insurance is to do it, and I'm told by the city to do it. I think that a little bit of direction would benefit me, first of all, and before I have to secure a loan or have to, I've already, I've already spent money on surveys that I'm being told I have to do. I've spent money on, just anybody that would listen to, and here I am. I'm fighting to keep my family and my home. I'm looking to all of you for direction. I didn't compare it, I got two jobs. I'm just here to get some help, guys. Here's my face, I want to meet all of you. Let's see what we can do. Thank you.
If staff could work with him, please.
Hey there. I'm Ben Johnson, and the previous speaker, kind of, his situation's what kind of brought me in here a little bit. You know, I wasn't in the study, and then I complained about it, and I got in the study, and I thought, well, I might raise it, I might not. But then I realized, hey, I'm at risk for more than the river. I'm an F-one away, or a fire from having to raise my house. My insurance doesn't cover that. So, you know, you sit there, I got bad news for you, Martin, the number's a little worse than you think. At two-point-six mil, which I think's the budget, at thirty-six, that's seventy-two thousand. Our, our part, or the city's, is going to be thirty-eight thousand. So, it's a little bit more than you thought. That's a hundred and ten. If you break it down, now, each house would be different, but if you did that just... If you break it down, now each house would be different, but if you did that just each house. And, you know, we'll get in, you know, I know they'll come see us when the money's supposed to be dispersed. You almost have to participate. I might have set it out if I just was at danger from the flood. I mean, you know, compared to 38,000 bucks, I'll pay the flood insurance. Now, I'm going to have to do it regardless, because if I have a fire or a tornado or something, too bad, so sad, I got to raise the house. So now, I'm going to have to sign up for the program whether I want to or not, because if all your neighbor's houses are raised, and yours isn't, try that out on open house day. That'll work out great. So, anyway, and so my question I'll ask too, you know, are we going to get different bids from different people to raise the house? Because I'll tell you a little story. One time, I had a project, and it's for the government. I sent them a bid like I would any of you. They sent my bid back. They said, sorry, Mr. Johnson, that's not enough, send another. So if that's going to be the situation, and you're sitting there paying 35 percent of that, then you're taking on the hit that they're gouging the government for. And that's not right for people, you know, talking about on fixed incomes and stuff like that. They shouldn't have to do that. You know, I'd never be one to go back and say, oh yeah, city, you need to pay, because, you know, I grew up on the street. I was there in 75 when it flooded. So I know where the river goes, and of course, I bought the house I'm in out of foreclosure. I was going to flip it, and the neighborhood's a great estate. And I based it on the 75 flood. I got a little surprise in May 1st, 2010. So my question is, while the city did pass, and, you know, agreed to build them, codes agreed to build them in 68, mine was built in 73, would they agree to build them today? And why did they agree to build them back in 2010? So, you know, that would be your question. So my, I guess what I'm saying is, for all of us to take the, and, you know, most of us, we're not in a rich part of town, to take the $38,000 direct hit, it's going to really, it's going to impact, the neighborhood's going to be like Alderman McClendon said, there's going to be people swoop in there, buy them, raise them up, and flip them. That's what's going to happen. And I just, you know, something about that doesn't sit real well with me. Anyway, that, and, you know, how many, on the other projects, you know, we know this one affects 35, 36 homes. How many homes are affected on the Maplewood one, and how many are affected on the Battle Avenue? Or is it 36 houses? I don't know. On a priority list, I know some of them have been in line longer, but I, you know, I'm just throwing questions out. Anyway, that's basically my point, as far as, you know, it's just food for thought.
Thank you.
Could I just sit here?
Sure.
And bring it closer to your...
It's Jedon.
Jedon.
Yeah. Well, the commissioner basically had my question answered, okay. And I didn't want to lose the ability to participate, even if I had to pay the 35 percent, because 65 percent is tremendous. I appreciate all that you all have done and said, even those who like number one. I mean, you have that right. I like number two, obviously, with Ann and Doug, but I also like number three. I've already had an estimate from a structure mover, because I'm not going to sit still. I've really designed the outside of my home and looked at the look I want, and maybe even got a free architect, I'm not sure. But two weeks ago, I went back to work full-time, not suspecting it, but I got the highest-paying job I've ever had. So I'm not going to sit still. I would like to access monies if I have to do a percent, like you were saying. I don't think I could repeat that. But at a better rate, transfers and deeds and stuff. I am going to see a mortgage broker, because to be quite honest, I usually don't put my business on the table publicly. I would have to borrow every penny of the elevation. However, I'm doing quite well at my job. I would like to say that, in my heart of hearts, and I hope my neighbors don't shoot me for this, I like number three. I think when you have some ownership in what's happening in your world, you look after it better. And it would give me a sense of pride. And I love my community. I want to stay in the price range I am. I do hope I can drive my car under my house when this is done. But just do the best you can. And I will too, and I know my neighbors will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be back about...